Call in the order, the regular meeting is January 20th, 2020, at 9:30 in the small hall. Please turn off all devices, thank you, please stand. Heavenly Father, please provide your guidance as the board of trustees take deliberation on issues relating to matters of the park and help them reach a just and appropriate resolution to those issues. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now take residents' comments and questions. Oh, I'm sorry, apologize, go call for his thing, he can come up.
Mary Chandler, here.
Lori Dalton, here.
Gordon Elton, here.
Pete Price, here.
Sandy Semenich, here.
Mike Sansoni, here.
Wayne Trotter, here.
We have a forum, we will now take residents' comments and questions.
Good morning. My name is Dottie Dear Wester, I live at 1804 Ohio Avenue, and I'm here to speak on two issues. On the agenda for the workshop and for the trustees meeting, the community channel policy is there twice. I don't know if it's going to be discussed during the workshop. Can that be answered now? Because that makes a difference on the comments.
The format does not allow for that.
Okay, well, it's in there twice. So, my understanding is that when decisions are to come to the trustees, when items are to come to the trustees for decisions, that they're presented at the workshop before, and I know that this topic had been presented at least once before. My question is, why is this policy being proposed? Is something broken? What is it supposed to fix? It seems to be adding another layer to getting slides on Channel 732. There is a process in place now. Please include answers to these questions during your discussion. The Computer Club reformed from the former Video Computer Club in December of 2018 as a result of the trustees changing the management structure of Channel 732. Members of the Computer Club are talented and willing to volunteer to assist the trustees and Channel 72 with the operations of Channel 732. I encourage trustees to tap into the volunteer talent available to you within this park regarding Channel 732. I also encourage the trustees to embrace technology. I recommend there are three options to preparing and submitting notices to Channel 732. One is the handwritten notices, which is done now. Second is a fill-in form that can be prepared on the computer and either submitted via email or dropped off to the proper person. And third is to allow those with the skills to develop the PowerPoint slides, to prepare those slides in that format and to submit via email. This type of submission saves work as it does not require someone else to develop the slide. It is prepared already for him or her and ready for review. The second item is a media committee change. It's also on the trustee agenda and on the workshop, with a slightly different title. Will it be discussed during the workshop? Thank you very much.
Jermaine Dream, 1614 Minnesota Avenue. I propose that the board do what should have been done as soon as the tent property had been purchased years ago. I propose that the board gather names of interested residents who will submit their writing, why they wish to be on the future planning committee. And from that list, the board select at least nine residents. And that the first duty for the future planning committee will be to collect, organize, and formulate the plan for the development of the tent property. The meetings will be posted, open to the public, minutes recorded, and reported to the board. I can't help but think, but wonder if an open process like this had been done to gather all the data in the last few years, that maybe we'd be in a better place for the board to make decisions on the use of this property. Thank you.
My name's Karen Harker. My address is 6907 West Bayou Lane. I'm a member of the Computer Club of Trailer Estates. It came to my attention in October that our members and other residents cannot connect to the Wi-Fi hotspots in the park. I suspected this was a software issue. I reported the problem when I had a representative from Spectrum tell me that using Wi-Fi hotspots is not included in our contract, and I want to thank Mary Chandler for looking into that. And I was hoping you might be able to give us a timeframe of when you'll resolve this issue. Also, too, I used to be a member of the Video Computer Club till it was disbanded. So, I wanted to call, I wanted to find out, too, about this Trailer Estates Parks and Recreation District Community Channel Policy, PP14A. I don't understand the reason for this proposal. I used to help all the time in the TV station in the first two years I was a resident here. There is no video club, so I just wanted to let the board know that got disbanded when I was ostracized from the TV room back in 2018. So, I want to know what the reason for this policy is. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Rob Green. I live at 1613 New York Avenue, and I'm here today for the Trailer Estates Horseshoe Club. What we're looking for is some money to fix up the pits and that, and I've got some sheets here that I would like to give you.
I need two of your documents, man. Thank you very much.
You gave me three.
There is, excuse me, there is a front and a back to this, just so we can follow along. And the Trailer Estate Horseshoe Club, we maintain the pits, we buy supplies on an ongoing basis, we purchase additional shoes if they need to be replaced. It costs a $68 a pair. And we have designed and put up new and attractive signs identifying the area. We've designed and built new scoreboards free to the pit. We do enjoy doing these items to benefit of our community. However, recently, we have encountered a situation with the iron stakes that we shoot at, they become loose after time, which creates a problem planning and even a potential safety hazard. The stakes move on impact and can launch and pitch a shoe several feet in some directions. We have tried several different techniques to repair or correct the situation at our expense. Unfortunately, these economical methods have failed to give us a permanent fix. We have done a good deal of research looking for a safe and permanent solution to the problem. Based on that research, we would like to propose the following long-term solution for keeping the stakes secure. We will be using six-by-six treated lumber with a 3/8 metal plate secured to the lumber with four 3/8 leg bolts as pictured above. The plate and the lumber will have a 1-inch maximum diameter hole to receive the stake. The metal plate should stop the lumber from breaking out. The costs associated with correcting all 14 pits are as follows. The plates cut and pre-drilled per specs are $20 each for a cost of $280. The 1-inch by 36-inch long cold-rolled metal stakes are $50 a pair times three. We only need six of those instead of the 14. The six-by-six by eight-foot treated lumber are $18.58. We need four of those for a total of $74.32. And the leg bolts, 3/8 inch by 4 inches long, are $42 for 50 of them for a cost of $84. The total cost comes to $588.32. We would appreciate it if the board would consider funding this long-term repair. We will provide all the labor to accomplish the above repairs. Your consideration, helping out in this manner is greatly appreciated. I may be reached, I may be reached by email at the following address listed, listed here.
Your time is up, Steve. But thank you, we did read it, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Good morning. My name is Peg Jameson, and I'm a Richard, my Richard husband and I are third-generation residents at 2013 Minnesota Avenue. I'm here today to remind all the TE residents of the next day of the Activity Fair, which will be Saturday, February 1st, 2020. It's coming fast. It's a great opportunity for TE residents to see the wonderful variety of activities available right here in Trailer Estates, all in one room, the large hall. The activities include art, cards, exercise, sports, dance, showtimes, dinners, religious, socialization, educational, and others. So, come to the fair and meet each of the activity representatives, find out what it takes to be a part of the activity. Again, Saturday, February 1st, 2020, in the large hall, 9:00 a.m. to noon. So, get out of your chair and come to the fair. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Any other comments or questions?
Here's Nadi Shaffer, 2207 Illinois. I know that recently we've seen some things on Facebook in regards to the tent property and the presentations of what I think the board is looking for. I was just wondering if there was any kind of perhaps formal announcements, there is a criteria set for what you're looking for for those plans, what the format is going to be presented in, and also what happens after the, after people's ideas are shared or presented. So, it's more of a process question and I guess one of clarity as to what is supposed to transpire at that event. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? Any questions? Oh, is there a response? Any of those? Sandy?
No, no comment.
I don't have any.
The Wi-Fi with Spectrum, I did get a response back from my business contact at Spectrum. I'm going to be providing him with a picture of the serial number on the boxes, and he's going to check and make sure that there's no issues with the boxes or what's going on because I, in our contract, we have two complimentary internet modems, and there's been no change to the contract regarding residents' ability to connect to the internet at those two hotspots. So, why we were told that that's not an above contract is a mystery to me, and it was to him. But I'm going to get those, send information back to him today, and we'll see where it goes. But I'm hoping we'll get resolution fairly quickly. But I'll be checking with him on a regular basis. The estimate for the horseshoe pits, I will bring that forward and add it to the workshop today, so we can talk about whether or not we want to fund that. So, we'll try to get that moved forward.
Right, that's nice.
Oh, well, we'll do it.
Let's see.
That's it.
No comments. Yeah, just with the horseshoe pits, I'd like to discuss that because I think I can take it out, so I can see how that helps. So, we'll save that for workshop?
Yeah.
Are you going to address the PP42?
We're going to discuss it in the workshop.
All right, then I'll cut that one.
I do have one more thing. I mean, I, I took the minutes of the last board meeting because Lori was ill. And, yeah, I don't want that talking. So, I think there was some confusion about where the status of a lot of the items that were discussed at the workshop. So, there is a duplication. It's my understanding that those items need to be discussed again at a workshop because there were enough issues that we needed to resolve, that they weren't ready to be voted on. So, it's a duplication. They should not be on the trustee reading agenda. So, I apologize. I think that was part of the, multiple hands in the process when I was trying to fill in.
Correction, they do need to stay on the.
Oh, okay, that's my mistake.
Okay, under, because we discussed it at a meeting of the board at the last one, and we tabled the action, we had to bring it back up on their old business on this workshop or this meeting, and we're going to table it again so we can discuss it in more detail in the workshop. Okay? That's why there's duplication. We had to bring it back under parliamentary procedure, present it once, and then table it, and then move on, move to the workshop where you can discuss it and go from there. That's where we are on that one. As to relation to tent property, there will be an announcement put on 732 starting tomorrow. We are asking people that have interest of giving us a proposal that they present to the board at its workshop on February 3rd. And the reason we ask for that is that we have a rough idea what will be discussed, since I've got to share that meeting. I would like the board to be aware of what's going to be happening, and we would like as much detail as possible from people as relates to the tent property. I want to clarify once again, we have not, as a board, taken any action as it relates to the tent properties. We are as, as confused as the residents of the carpet as to what should take place. There is no consensus of the board, that I'm aware of, as it relates to the tent property at this time. We are seeking input. What we'll do after we get the input, I don't know. We may not do anything. Again, we have to feel out the residents and the way they feel about the tent property. And my personal feedback from getting from people is, they really don't want us to do anything. I may be wrong, but I get that impression that there isn't a will among the people themselves to come to a consensus. And to take it to a referendum before we can get somewhat of a consensus makes no sense because it's group failure. But we want to listen, we want to get ideas, we want to, you know, get as much input as we can. The idea of a committee won't work because of the Sunshine Law of the State of Florida. You can't have a committee without a board member there. And if we have two board members there, then we definitely have to have a Sunshine Law continuation. So, the committee concept, although it's a nice one, won't work on, from that basis. And if we told you to go ahead with a committee, and we could set up a committee, they'd have to be done when? By April? Because most of you will go home by April, so you're going to be carrying it over until January of next year. It just doesn't make some sense at this point. That's why we're going to listen and hear from people as to what they think we should be doing with that property. Moving on, yes?
I, I'm sorry, I missed one thing. I need for everyone to understand that there is no board-approved Facebook page. Trailer Estates Facebook page is residence, it is not board-approved, it's not information that's coming from the board directly, and I don't look at it, I don't police it, I don't, but just need you to understand that that's not a board Facebook page. We do not have a Facebook page. Sorry, go ahead.
There's actually three of them out there.
Oh, it doesn't matter, none of them are approved.
Okay, moving on, we need a motion to approve the minutes of January 6th, 2019. Do you have a motion?
How many do I say?
Sandy, you have a second?
Second. Question, typographical errors. Do you want those identified now or?
Sorry, Mary.
Yes. Do you make the corrections or?
I will, I will take care of them.
Okay.
On the bottom of page two, the last line says share and price medial permission. There's an extra L.
Oh.
And on the last page, report from clubs and organizations, Dottie spells her name, D-O-T-T-I-E. And a question on the report of the expenses and income from the New Year's Eve dance. Should the minutes include the actual amount of revenue expenses?
Not necessary. It's included, the report's provided to the office, and so it's part of the public record as an attachment.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any other, or any other corrections?
Yes, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
On the first page, Dottie Dear Wester statement, the, let's see, the third line under her name starts with the word members. If you move over to the right, it says, and does it call under, and it should say fall under.
Oh, yeah.
Which is not a biggie. And then, the next statement is a, is a question after, after responding to Gordon in the fashion that I did for the New Year's Eve. In the past, under the treasures report, we've never, since I've been secretary, we've never just said, approved regular expenses. We've actually enumerated them. And I know that you passed out an attachment. I didn't get that particular attachment. I know it's on record, but do you want them enumerated into minutes? That's a question, that's a question for Mike.
Yes, incorporate that into the motion.
Okay. So, I'll have to get a copy to verify that, that that matches.
Okay. Any, any other corrections or additions? Seeing, all those are papers signed by, say an aye?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the trustee's workshop minutes of January 6th, 2019. Do you have a motion to accept? Second by Pete?
Hang on, hang on just a second. Mary wrote him, she can't, she can't. Pete, Pete will do the first, okay?
Public Relations Trustee, I'd like to ask Dwayne to fill in as needed while, since he's the most experienced at that while I'm gone.
No.
She didn't do it for Mary.
That's all I have. Lori?
Can I bring Dwayne?
I'm leaving for Lori.
Okay, that's fine. All right. First off, I want to thank Mary for covering for me at the last meeting and doing the minutes. Thanks, I really appreciate it. And then the other thing is, I've received and processed the trustee reservations for the May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Therefore, I'm ready to accept reservations from residents and clubs and groups and organizations for this same time period. Please remember, for me to process recurring reservations, I will need to have your organization's bylaws, officers, et cetera, or for less formal groups of PP39 submitted with your reservation. Otherwise, I can't process it. Since I have been ill, I am way behind with the work in the office. Normally, these reservations are turned around within about a week. That's not going to happen right now. Please give me a couple of weeks to get the paperwork processed, and thanks for your understanding on that.
May I say something?
Sure.
I received the email message from Neighborhood Watch. This isn't necessarily a continued
track, but there was some interest in it, and I think it arose from going back to some discussion that had about the Sheriff Department coming to do a presentation at one of the coffee breaks, and I was looking at April. But we had mentioned before about possibly maybe coming to the board meeting, but we discussed at a board meeting, thought maybe it might be better if it would work out in an evening sometime, so we could coordinate it with code enforcement and then have more people available. That hasn't developed yet, but I'm going to still try to reschedule the deputy to come in April and get other while we could consider also. But the email message, concerned, expressed a concern that the participation in Neighborhood, Neighborhood Watch has really diminished, and there's hardly anyone who will come out and participate in their activity of controlling the park and so forth. And this, this is something that goes back in the park to, I think, about 1977, early on end of when the park was founded there and they were developing it. There was a, a form of a security watch that was formed at that time, and it seems like now there's, the groups or the people who sent the email message expressed a concern that no one has any interest in the safety or the issues of crime in the park. And they were suggesting that maybe consider putting up some video cameras throughout the park to help monitor that, since they don't have the exposure anymore of the people driving throughout the park to keep an eye on things. I just thought I'd bring that to the management board. Pardon me. The board will be accepting letters of intent from 1:00 p.m. today, January 20th, until 3:00 p.m. Friday, February 14th, for the two vacant positions, one term ending December 2020, the other term ending December 2021. And they must be available for the February 17th meeting for interviews, people conduct interviews on that day. Received an email from 1609 Wisconsin and 6921 Park Lane, raising concerns about removal of activity posters from bulletin boards down at the post office. Their solution is to place, place it under lock and key. That becomes a problem in and of itself because after a while you're issuing so many keys, you really don't know who has keys. I cannot, how can I put this? Cannot make adults who want to act like teenagers be adults. I mean, there's no way you can correct that. All you can do is, there's a lot of people that are allowed to remove things from the bulletin board. The secretary of her designation, designate, who happened to be me. And we only remove things at the end of the month or activities that have ended. Nobody else should be removing anything from the bulletin boards. I'd like to remind the board members that they should keep off Facebook. Not that I have a problem with Facebook, it's the issue of the Sunshine Law. If two or more trustees are on Facebook at the same time and end up discussing an issue that might come before the board for a bulletin, it could result in a violation of the Florida Sunshine Law and put them and the park in jeopardy. The Sunshine Law is very tricky. It says if you communicate with a person outside of the meeting in any format, in a, in a disgusting issue that could come, is, could be an idea, could be a suggestion, that might come before the board, and the board members discuss it, they're violating the Sunshine Law. The same applies on Facebook. If two or more are on, if you can look at it, you just can't participate. That's what I want to drive home, is the participation I'm going to start with all. February 3rd board meeting will be a long one, could be a long one. Again, we're advertising on 732 as of today, that any person who has an idea they wish to advance on tent property can come before the board on the 3rd. The reason we want them to come before the board is we want to have an idea of what they're planning to present. We'd ask it to be as detailed as they can possibly make it. We may not be able to make it very detailed, that's fine, but we'd like to have a rough idea of what they're talking about. You brought up the idea of reminding board members about the Activity Fair on the 1st, Saturday of February. I would also suggest the Neighborhood Watch, get a booth and start advertising. Again, they can use 732 as a means of doing that. But that, that's my report. Dwayne, I understand you got a little bit of a list.
Maybe I should post.
No.
Okay, from the main, well, this is from the past north, but the Marina update MAS, our company that's been doing all the well digging and all that down there, the state required them, under a new regulation, to dig two more wells. They were both 12 feet deep, they have two barrels.
deep. They have two barrels sitting down there. The, they're not contaminated soil, but the test results came back clean. So for the next sixty days, we're going to be retesting the, uh, the new wells, and the other eight wells that are down there now, uh, all of them have came back just slightly over the, uh, minimum requirements for that. So knock on wood, maybe in the next sixty days, we will be done with that project. Uh, we have reviewed the beautification committee's request for the, uh, five foot, uh, concrete ground there. Uh, it's my recommendation to the board that we deny it. I'm going to put that in the twenty twenty one. I don't really consider the beautification object, but, uh, I'm sure that'll be approved later on. Uh, we've been in the process of replacing the pool chairs, uh, the straps and stuff. Uh, nine of them out of the forty-two are now out for, uh, repair. It's about a four-week turnaround for each, or the nine. So as they come back in, then the nine will go right back out unless it's been repaired. Uh, there's a lot more to it. I didn't know they were selling, blasting and repainting the entire chair. I thought it was just replace the straps and come back, but it's not. Uh, the sound system that was approved a couple meetings ago for the church is in, and, uh, maintenance is going to be going and starting the measurements for the cabinetry, rebuild cabinets. Once, once that's done, then the company will come back in and start, um, programming the whole system. Uh, it looks bad. It was something that's going to be really easy to handle. Uh, an additional port potty was delivered down to the Bachi Court, since they're not being heavily used. Uh, we have received three bids for the reasphalting of the, um, Marina parking on the south side of the, uh, Marina. Uh, the low bid came in at all around improvements. Uh, the original bid came in at ten three. Mark Y did some negotiations and brought it down to nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars, which is under the ten thousand dollar requirement. Uh, it's my recommendation that we approve that, so I can get it, uh, in the process of getting the work done. That should be about a thirteen thousand thirty dollar savings of what the budget was already, it was twenty two thousand or twenty-five for the budget. The four eighty-eight doors, I wish, uh, Sandy was, Sandy, Lori was here. Uh, we received the bids for those. Uh, the low bid for the three doors for the men's, women's in the south, uh, door for the large hall came in, uh, they're six thousand bucks. The other door at the post office came in at thirty one hundred dollars, and, uh, so it's my recommendation that we go ahead and make that so I can get the companies in here to start.
Six thousand total is a two thousand each?
Six thousand and thirty one hundred.
Okay.
Uh, and I need to include another eight hundred and ninety dollars, eight hundred and ninety bucks in there, so.
So ninety-nine ninety.
Nine and twelve.
I mean, at twelve, four hundred and ninety-nine ninety, yeah, we could save.
So it's about twenty-four hundred and ten dollar savings there. But as soon as I can get through from the board, I'll go ahead and get with Mark and we'll start the installation, get those installed, and that will be the dead issue finally. At the last meeting, we discussed the thermostats and, uh, in the large hall, people coming up and turning up the heat and turning it down, blah, blah, blah. Uh, I'm not done looking at that. The thermostats are up against the outside wall, so if the outside wall is reading seventy-two and you turn down to sixty-six or vice versa, then it's fluctuating in the middle of the, uh, middle of the room. So Mark and I are working on a process on how we can get that resolved, but nothing's done yet. We're in the process now of re, getting prices in to replace the ceiling tile here in the, uh, small hall. Uh, we've already received prices and stuff for the electricity. We have one today for the air ducts coming through to change that, and that will be one of my major submissions for the twenty twenty one budget. And last, I met with the pool security people Friday ago. Uh, we had some pretty good discussions on what was really happening. Uh, I want to set up another meeting with the pool security. Uh, I have a couple of ideas, uh, just see if we can't help that before the spring break problem gets here.
And that's it. Any questions? Would you guys, it's true, he has to bring back the motions at the next meeting, or is yours already approved?
Well, there, yeah, but we've already approved the work when we set the budget, and we approved a dollar now, and he's coming in under that dollar now, so.
Are we either voting?
I don't think we need to vote on it. It's already been voted and approved, and he's not overbucked it, so he's not asking for more money, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
Get it going, Mark. On the pool security issue.
Yes.
How many signs do we have up there stating the Florida regulations as it relates to the use of, uh, water and all that other stuff?
None.
Maybe we should look into putting at least four of them.
Seven. Uh, I'm already working on that. Uh, that's one of the issues we'll be working with the pool security on. Uh, one of the things I did do is I went out and purchased new hats because I didn't like black hats that said pool security, so it was now white hats that says pool monitor, sign and change. Uh, just trying to make it more feasible to the residents to claim that they're not being barfed at. It's just going to be kind of friendly. However, I do have a bunch of residents that do get rather rude. Uh, it's a rule, it's, some of them are state laws that we're going to have to abide by. Please, just, just try and follow the rules that we've already got in place.
And the replacement of the chairs, the reconditioning of the chairs in the pool, how is that affecting people's attitudes towards being able to sit at the pool?
The only thing I'm seeing right now is that we have enough lounge chairs, but I'd like to get with Mark and see if I've got it, and like you, to see if we can't get more tables with the umbrellas. Or we have more than enough lounge chairs, or lounge chairs, I should say.
You mean during the process of reconditioning?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, uh, beautification committee?
Good morning. Sandy Stevens from eighteen fourteen Minnesota Avenue, representing the beautification committee. Um, first on my list is Soul Sensation. We're sold out, and thank everybody for helping with this, and hope to see you there, and it's going to be a wonderful show, and it's on Friday the twenty fourth. Our meeting for the month of January will be one PM, Wednesday, the twenty second, in the small hall. And on the February first activity here, uh, I don't know what I'm supposed to talk about. And I want to thank Dwayne and Mark for going over all that stuff with the beach, and thank you for taking it over, and now we can take our money and put it into some other kind of beautification. Thank you, everybody.
Moving on to old business, community channel policy.
I'd like to table that until the next meeting.
The motions, you're making the motion.
I, I make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Mary's seconded it. Paper is not discussable or debatable. All those are papers signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass it. Next one is duty of the chairman.
Again, uh, I'd like to table that until the next meeting.
Go second.
I'll second it.
Mary's seconded it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next one is media committee change.
I make, uh, or I'd like to table that until the next meeting.
Mary's seconded it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Application for keeping emotional support animals.
Alright, I need to make my, my original motion on that one. I make a motion to update the application for keeping emotional support service animals as an accommodation for residents with disability, PP forty, to include the two questions and replacement of the doctor design as discussed at the December sixteenth, twenty nineteen workshop.
Go second.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Alright, I need a discussion.
You have to root for it.
Thank you. I, uh, need to pass these out. Send two that way. Um, I, I heard what was said at the, at the last board meeting about the confusion, and so what I'm proposing is that we add this statement that I circled here on the first page, and the statement says, along with the above-mentioned letterhead prescription pad, the following must also be completed, so that they're, they understand we need both. So it, does everybody kind of sort of think that fixes it?
I think it goes with it. Okay, Sandy?
Hi, great.
Pete?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Cory?
Well, I'm not sure that it does, because I, I just want to clarify what I'm, I'm saying. Now, there's multiple pages here.
Right.
The first page to the top is the same as the sec, is the front page of, of it, and the sec, the front, this first page is actually the second page.
Okay, so the page two, the one on the front is the replacement page two?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
The proposed replacement page two, yes.
And then the, the whole part below it was what was originally proposed to be added.
Correct.
So we're still re, uh, requiring them to have the signature of a physician.
Yep.
Yes.
And we also need a letter or some other document.
Letterhead and prescription pad.
From one of these. The definition of a mental health care professional.
Just define my statement in federal law.
Okay, I haven't never seen anything that defines that.
My understanding based on the stuff the FHA has out, pure housing associates, well, they have out for mental health care professionals, the name defined it, we don't.
So with the, with this change, I'd like to amend my motion to read, to update the application for keeping emotional support service animals as an accommodation for residents with disability, PP forty, to include the two questions and place, and a place for the doctor design as discussed at the December sixteenth, twenty nineteen workshop, and add clarifying statement regarding repeated information.
Mary's seconding, accept that?
I can.
Dwayne's seconded. You seconded it, yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Question, would this, would this apply to the people that currently have this, uh, or is the existing authorization continued?
I would, I would assume, and there's that rotten word, that this is an annual document. So if you turned in your doc, if you had this and you turned in your document last week, it's good for a year. And so you wouldn't see this new form until next year, when you need to re-up your paperwork. So, so i- it's a living document that's starting whenever we approve it forward, this is the document that's going to be used, but all, we're not going to go backwards and make them go.
So every annual, a new role.
Every new annual renewal will hit the new form, right. Is that a valid assumption, Mike?
That's a, you could do assumption, right, yeah. Because they're required to provide us a copy of the, the dog, the animal shots on an annual basis also.
So this, this come going to the welcome pack also?
It's not in the welcome pack.
It's not now?
No, there's a reference to it, and there's a reference to the rules, and a reference to where to find it, but we don't repeat the information over and over in the welcome pack, and we just point them to where they can get it.
Cool.
I, I wasn't, uh, clear that it was required a annual renewal, other than just the shot record for the animal.
We have been doing it on an annual basis as long as I've been signing off on them.
I was looking for where it says that.
We might need to add that if it's not there.
I would, I would add at the top of the heading. Lori?
I'm listening.
I had, I put it up at the top of the heading. Trailer states annual, you know, annual trailer state park recreation application for keeping emotional support for animal as an accommodation for residents with disability.
So we're just going to word, add the word annual in front of the word beautification?
That's what we'd use it. Anybody have a problem with that?
Do you want to get rid of my motion again? Okay. Alright, um, I'm going to make a motion to update the application for keeping emotional support service animals as an accommodation for residents with disabilities, PP forty, to include the two questions and a place for the doctor's sign as discussed at the December sixteenth, twenty nineteen workshop, and add clarifying statement regarding repeated information and the word annual in the heading.
Dwayne, do you second it?
I second it, yeah.
Any further discussion?
I found in item number three on the page one, it says in conjunction with each annual review. So there is that reference to annual.
I only got it in two places, and hopefully they'll be able to read it.
Yeah, we, we made it more obvious to you than the heading. I have no problem with that.
All those are papers signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. That completes old business, new business.
No, we have two more. We have the PP thirty-seven, thirty-seven, eight.
That's something to do with this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
And you're seconded.
Okay. PP thirty-seven, I, uh, I make a motion to approve the changes to PP thirty-seven presented at the January sixth, twenty twenty workshop.
I'm going to have a second. Second? Pete's seconded it. So you want your change, go ahead, you explain.
This, this was the changes we talked about, where people will, uh, designate when they want doors unlocked, so that we not properly open doors, and the fog system controls access.
The, the, the other thing that's changing, and that's the third circle down on the page, is I've removed that box where they are supposed to check mark, that they've read the form, and I've changed it to say by submitting this form. That makes it easier for me to accept the email forms that I might get and whatnot. So if they, as soon as they put their name on it, they're saying, I've read the, I've read the directions. I know the rules.
Cory?
With the second, uh, box there under kitchen, by the fact that it's listed under the kitchen, uh, section, it suggests to me that it only applies somehow, something related to the kitchen.
Do you have a black line underneath the, underneath the kitchen section?
And first, the intent is that it applies to all doors, I, as I understood our previous discussion.
Correct.
And it doesn't address whether it applies to the inside doors as well as the outside doors. Like at the large hall, the inside door is going out to the restrooms.
There's no fob on them, sorry.
It's not fob.
It's not applicable.
But the question about whether they can be propped open or not.
Open.
I think it's self-explanatory, the behaving of the doors that the fobs are, we're asking if they want to disable, so they don't have to prop open those doors. The doors going from the large hall into the, um, best view, best way to describe it, uh, could be propped open.
But they still shouldn't be because they opened.
Right.
Well, either they can be or they can't be.
They're not supposed to be, we're not supposed to prop doors open, period. That's a real easy statement. No prop the doors open.
The pro, the propping of opening of doors is basically for fire, when there's a fire emergency, you would prop the door open so people could exit from building easier. Otherwise, people are supposed to open the doors, um, with the fob, and then, you know, the inside doors are not supposed to be propped.
Was there a reason why we didn't have this discussion at the workshop?
Well, yeah.
I, I wasn't here, so I don't know, but it just seems like we're coming late to the party. We, we should have beat this document up at the workshop, and now we're beating it up when we're supposed to have already beat it up. So I'm confused.
I thought we pretty well beat it up. Uh, it, it was generating where, uh, whoever put, submitted the reservation was not. It was generating where whoever submitted the reservation was not being transmitted forward to TJ to make sure that those doors were unlocked at the specific times which then people were going ahead and opening up the outer doors, which was taking care of all the AC and everything. The inner doors to the north side of the park there, that's still inside the air conditioning. I don't agree with propping them open, but if it is propped open, they still have to use their fob to get in, and it's still air-conditioned out there with the toilets and stuff.
That's not air-conditioned out there, is it?
Yeah.
And what's awful hot in there? Oh, okay. When you go clean there sometimes, but...
But, go ahead, I agree with it.
But there was a situation that came up subsequent to the prior workshop discussion on this about the inside doors where a statement was made that they could not be propped open. And I don't think anyone realized or thought about those inside doors, whether they applied to it or not when we had our previous discussion. And I don't see.
Why do you need to prop those doors open? They're not fobbed, you can walk up and pull it.
Because of the difficulty of opening for some people with disabilities.
They have a power button, you push the button.
On the inside door?
Yes. Yep.
There should be no reason to.
It's got a handicap access.
There should be no reason to prop it.
And I'd like to see that the policy is clear that it applies to those doors or not because we have many inside doors.
I'm going to really outboard it. I don't think that's got any relevancy in this discussion. I think we should go ahead and approve this. If it comes to an issue, we can always go back and revisit it. It's the understanding of the majority of the trustees on the board that it applies to the outside door where you have the fob. The inside doors are never supposed to be propped open. Again, the prop thing is put there for purposes of player exit emergencies or like the emergency we had on Sunday at the dance where it was necessary to prop the doors open in order to get a person out of the building in a manner conducive and made it easier for the player, fire rescue emergency, people to do it. With that, any other discussion?
That rules came over through common sense. Sometimes you gotta use common sense in these situations too. You can't rule, put rules on everybody.
So are we adding a line separating kitchen from, are you inviting the general public?
No.
No?
No, okay. So it's good as is? All right.
All those are papers signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Both?
Aye.
Gordon, was your aye?
Negative.
Negative.
Negative, okay, thank you.
Moving on to the next one, Mary?
Yes, approve the changes to PP37A presented at the January 6th, 2020 workshop, and that is just simply adding that statement that's circled. There's no other changes to that.
Discussion.
Second.
Second, sorry, thank you. Any other discussion?
We need a second. I can't second my own word.
Sandy will second.
Sandy, thank you. It's all right. Not a problem. It's confused.
Discussion. Seeing all those are papers signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. That completes new business. Report from clubs and organizations. Any clubs or organizations that wish to come forward?
I do. I'm going to be taking over for Dale for the Christmas dinner committee.
Praise the Lord.
We've had our first meeting. We'll have another pre-planning meeting in March. I'll make sure that I get it advertised. Would love for as many people to attend as possible. Always looking for volunteers. It's going to be, Dale and Joan have both stepped back from their leadership roles, and so it'll be new leadership, and we're going to do some things better, we're going to do some things worse. We're just going to do the best we can, and we want to get as many people involved in that as possible. So I'll advertise it on channel 732, give everybody as much warning at that March meeting. And we'd love to see lots and lots of faces there. And really happy that we're able to continue that Christmas dinner every year.
Any other clubs or organizations?
Could you ring in?
Yep.
Please.
Karen Harker, 6907 West Bayou Lane. The video, I'm sorry. The Computer Club of Trailer Estates will be doing a presentation and training following our next meeting, February 7th, in the Pelican Room. The subject of the next training will be how to make your TV smart, how to make your TV smart, and how to use the Spectrum TV app. That's it.
Andy Stevens, 1814 Minnesota Avenue. I did all the, this is about bingo, okay? I just added up everything for 2019, and we donated $3,981.09 No, no, no cents, I'm going to go. To Mothers Helping Mothers. It's continuing on to be well. That means we brought close to $40,000 out to give out surprises. So bingo is doing flourishing, and mothers and helping mothers are very happy. Thank you.
Any other clubs or organizations? Seeing now, do I motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Mary, do you need to motion or second?
I'm second.
Lori, second. All papers signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Ten? Four? Thirty? Let's take a five minute reason.
That was important.
I'd like to know the camera this morning.
I'd like to call the Board of Trustees Workshop for January 20, 2020. Call the order at quarter to eleven. Any additional items which we put on the agenda?
I have one. I'd like to include the PP15 surplus property worksheet I have.
Do it when you're talking.
And I want to add the Horseshoe Club's request for funding. Sandy, anything else? And the dumpster.
Any other items? Any other items? Moving on, the first one, Lori?
All right. The first one, I need to recommend that we change PP50 to PP9A. And the problem is when we were redoing these, that didn't get picked up as a duty, and it's really a kitchen manager duty. And so it needs to go up with the duties like dock master and stuff like that. So we just need to fix that to PP9A.
Any discussion? Bring it forward to the next board meeting.
All right.
Next one is.
The next one is to change PP50A to PP50. Since we eliminated PP50, we just need to move that up and make it be PP50 without the A on the end. It's easy enough to clean up now, and it'll be less confusing later.
Any objections? Moving on, move on to the next board meeting.
All right. I'm proposing that we create a PP9B, again duties, and have a community channel manager duties. Just like we have a kitchen manager duties and we have a dock master duties, have the community channel manager duties and enumerate them here. And when I was doing the example, I'm sorry, I don't know the timing routine of the rebroadcast. So I was just using as an example the annually that needs to be presented to the chair.
Can you hear my call? Co-pilot. I've got a few corrections in the top. If you should say community channel manager, you need to add G there. In the first sentence, behind the word board chairman or designate, and in the second one, remove the period, put or designate, and put the period.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Ford?
Is this intended to be a volunteer position person?
Yes.
That's in that. And how does this fit into the other operation of the the community channel?
You don't need to elaborate, I don't follow the question.
Well, this says, ensure requested data is provided on the community channel. So is this the person that's intended to be the one that actually puts it on there?
Yes.
Or is in charge of the volunteers who does?
Yeah.
They're ultimately responsible for it.
Okay, so this would be a board or chairman appointment, who?
Yes.
General authority is for the chair to appoint these types of positions? Is that requiring approval by the rest of the board? Or is it just the chairman's choice?
The board, the chair has afforded the board the ability to do so. The chair has been told that he does not have to.
Okay, so it'd be a chair appointment, basically?
Correct. One of the reasons, you asked, why are we doing this? The simplest one is 732 is a government channel. It's not a park channel, it's not a recreational channel, it's the parks' channel of the government. And as such, the government has a responsibility to make sure its information that it's putting out there is in accordance with the policies of the board. And that's why we're doing this. It's just that simple. Any further discussion about the channel manager duties? Move that from the next board meeting.
Wait, hang on just a second for me. With that, with that in mind, do I have, do I have a spot? Sorry, did I talk about PP14A?
Yes.
That's later.
Later on.
Sorry.
We're.
All right, yep.
Next one is creating or updating the organizational chart.
And that's just a matter of record. Adding the kitchen manager that was not on the organizational chart, and then the community channel manager.
Any discussion? Who got Ford for the next board meeting? Next one's Mary's.
Next one's me, yes. And a couple of board meetings ago, we talked about some changes that would make sense to our phone expense. Right now, we're currently paying for a phone line in, two phone lines in the shuffleboard court, one in the woodshop. And we do not have a phone in the kitchen. So I looked into what would it cost to change those phones to 911 emergency phone lines only. So that they're not made for people to make personal phone calls or, you know, order out some lunch or anything. They're only, would be available if there was an emergency that required 911. And I worked with Big Fish on converting, because they've converted all of our phone systems except for these, over to emergency-only phone lines. Now, there's a lot of numbers on this page. The long and short of it is if we move the shuffleboard, the woodshop, the phone at the pool to 911-only emergency phones, and we install a phone near the kitchen here so that if there is an emergency in the kitchen, they don't have to run for their cellphone, they can just use that phone to call 911. It would take us about a year and a half to recover the cost for that. So there would be an initial expense now, the savings from the monthly phone charges. So the bottom line benefit would take about a year and a half. And then from that point forward, the park would save money on phone expense. And we would still, you know, we're not required to provide a phone line for all outgoing calls, but we definitely should be providing a phone line for an emergency, especially in a place like the woodshop or the kitchen. I mean, that's huge.
When we do the kitchen, can we put it just outside the kitchen? One, if there's a fire in the kitchen or anybody in the kitchen trying to make a phone call. And two, in case there's an event at the dance or whatever, there's a phone that they can call.
Definitely, if we decide to move forward, we'll make sure we place them.
Strategically placed.
Strategically, the objects there. I was surprised, I guess I hadn't taken the time to look and realize, my gosh, I mean, accidents happen in kitchens. I can't believe that there's no phone anywhere near that kitchen. So that was a big one. If we don't do the others, I would at least like to get a phone put outside that kitchen. I just think that's a, that's an important place to have one.
In the pool, you can actually dial out?
You can, yeah, but I'm going to change it to being a night. You shouldn't need to make a personal phone call from the pool, keep your cellphone for that. But if someone's having a medical emergency, you should be able to pick up the phone with 911.
Do I understand that these are phone over internet, so there's no?
They will be.
There's no ongoing monthly cost, it's just the upfront.
Correct, once we have this initial expense, there's no monthly cost from that point forward. And so that's what we'll save.
Previously, there was, as I understood it, there was some, the phone in the TV room and the one in the pool were the same phone or the same line or something.
Yes.
Because what does this do if anything to the phone in the TV room?
It would eliminate that phone, actually.
The TV room, the channels, channel 732 needs a phone.
Needs to be able to make outside phone calls.
They need to make outside phone calls, they need to be able to call the spectrum for service if there's problems. They need to be able to call the board, call board members, the chairman if there's questions and issues. So that phone, that phone, making, I'm going to say that, Gordon. That phone in the channel 732 room needs to stay full functioning, can be voice over internet, that's not a problem. But it needs to stay up long.
So we'll make the phone line that's there as a dedicated phone, and then we'll install a 911-only emergency phone outside by the spot.
So the cost, the additional cost would be in this year's budget?
If we make the decision to go ahead, yeah, we would fund it right now.
So the exact table was being done?
Yep. Does it all have?
With, with the, you also bring the information of all, you know, included with the same file.
Exactly.
With that.
So you'll move it forward.
I will move it forward with, and I'll make sure I clarify that thing. The next three or four, actually four, were all ones that I brought forward at the last board meeting on Lori's behalf. And then they decided they need to be workshopped again, so.
So can I take them over?
Yeah.
All right. Let's see, PP14A, I need to pass out a new version of 14A, there's that going that way, that going that way. TJ already has one in the office. And I heard what was said about the question with PP14A, and it made perfect sense. So I'm recommending, now that we've workshopped and said we're going to create a channel 732 manager, that we replace the verbiage of video club to be community channel manager in those two places that it showed up in PP14A. So I'm recommending that we make that change, and then move this forward. At the next board meeting.
Discussion. Lori?
Check my notes here, the policy. Three weeks. We've had discussions in the past about commercial purposes. And this, this allows clubs that are organizing events to put, to continue to put their ads on their self tickets.
Well, it's not, they're not putting on an ad, they're advertising an event that the club is participating in and sponsoring. That is not a commercial endeavor as determined, you know, by what they're advertising.
Right, so we're
In other words, if the computer club wants to throw a party in Venezuela and they're saying it's going to cost you $3,000, do you advertise it as the computer club is having a trip to Venezuela for $3,000 a person? You know, please contact the following person. That's not a commercial advertisement, it's a club activity.
So like the ARC club.
The ARC club, the same way, if they're going to have, you know, Anna Marie Auguste Barre on Thursday night, Pride Rip, and they're going to go there, they advertise that.
Or a Panama can help.
Same thing. Yes, to answer your basic question, yes. Any other questions concerns?
So I can move this forward?
Move that forward, I'm going to interject, I should have said something earlier. Let me did 14A, there's also a 14B that needs to be added, which I will pass out. Which is the form that's current, that's used to submit to the community channel current event request form. We've added community channel to it, we're making it a PP14B and we're creating this policy. It was mentioned by a resident that why don't we allow them to email the form? Would this be able to be downloaded as a Word document? Go ahead, Lauren.
I don't know. I can work on it, but it's going to be probably three weeks or a month before I have an opportunity to look at this as a fillable form.
I think we still get an
And it's only because
We still have an
Software isn't nice and polite with the squares and the letters. And so I have to see how I can restrict one letter per square. And so that's going to take some brain power. And I, with the reservations that's going to be coming in, I'm going to be swamped. So for right now, they could print it at home, they could fill it in, they could scan it and email it back to you, and that would work. But as far as a fillable form, it can't, it won't be that for at least a month. But I can work on that.
Put it on your list, Lauren.
It is.
With that, move forward, any discussion?
The other part of the question was to allow clubs and organizations to prepare it already in a slide form for addition. Do we want to consider allowing that?
Let me think about that. When she brings back the other, we'll discuss it then. I don't see a reason why it couldn't be, but I would rather think about that first.
Yeah, we need, we need to cogitate on, maybe we could say, see attached slide. They email you the slide, you could still print it for public record, the slide wouldn't be necessarily colored in all pretty for public record, but then you could forward that, so that, that might be a possibility.
The reason, again, because we're going to the governmental channel, we have to keep public records. So everything that's submitted has to be kept in a format that can be used. I'm not against the idea, I think we got to work up the logistics of it. With that, we'll move that forward. Next one, duties of the chair.
Hang on just a second, I have to catch up on my notes. All right, duties of the chair, that was just held up because of the, that we hadn't figured out what we were going to do with the community channel. And we have now, so I still think that we need to add number 11, oversee all aspects of the district's community channel. And that's the only thing that's changing there.
Any objections? Move that forward, next meeting.
Okay.
Application for emotional support animals?
No, not one, media committee charge. Media committee charge.
I'm sorry.
PP 11.
PP 11.
And that was, that was just verbiage that was necessary to have some remedy should the chair
Or we're stuck.
Oh, decline a, decline a slide, or decline an announcement that gives them some form of remedy for it. So we've just added the verbiage, it, it all stayed the same. There wasn't anything that needed to be changed, it just had to hold until we did this. This all happens all in one big ball, but they're each individual documents. So, okay. Can I run?
I have a question on this.
Okay.
My understanding is this committee would be subject to the sunshine law?
Yes.
Much like the beautification, should we have a statement on this document that says that?
No, there, the committees know that they're
Well, they're, they're a committee established.
We could add to, we could add to that top, top sentence, that's subject to sunshine law.
Yeah, I don't think that would hurt.
And what, the chairperson is establishing a committee and that is, once he establishes, she establishes that committee, it may really go back to the de, not the de restrictions, or bylaws and stuff that automatically says that it falls through the sunshine law.
Right.
To me, it's just duplicating what's already in our books.
And the description in, in item number one says special standing committee. And our bylaws only have standing committees, so I'm wondering if the word special should be stripped in from this document.
For what?
Number one, number one.
I'm sorry, I missed
Number one, special.
Yeah.
So like the word special, just put outstanding committee?
Yes, I think that's consistent with our bylaws.
Any other for? Move that forward.
All right, PP, the PP 14 is unnecessary because we voted on it. At the board meeting.
Next one, yours, Lauren.
Oh, okay. I would like to recommend the following budget timeline for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. I have for each of those who need to submit me a budget, an exhibit that provides for you what was spent. Both of those are Duane's and those are in public record now.
Those are both Duane's?
Yes.
Okay, because your pants not to me.
Right, so the following people, Sandy, Pete, and Duane, have budgets they need to submit to me about what you think your spending needs to be for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. What you have there is what you actually spent in the 2019-2020 year. What you've spent in first quarter of this current fiscal year and what you have for a remaining budget. And then you need to provide for me what you're going to need for that next fiscal year. So you have some run rates to work with. Duane, you've got both the maintenance budget and the capital improvement budget. So what that's going to do, that's got a couple of years of capital improvements on it. That's like a document that lives on and, because there's always capital improvement projects that we want to do in a particular fiscal year, but for one reason or another, we don't get them done and they carry forward. So, and then we have savings and so that, that kind of is where we are as of this fiscal year that we're in right now. So you can see what you think you can get done this year, what might need to go over to the 2020-2021 year, and then anything you want to add. If we, if you guys could get that back to me by the 24. And if you need a couple more days, I'm not going to, that's fine. What I plan to do is presenting a first draft of the budget at the February 3 meeting for the first round of discussions about where we're, where we're landing.
I'm sorry, I just realized that there's a 20th, you want four days.
Yeah.
Cool.
Well, I'm hoping those run rates are going to help you. If you, if you need a couple more days, like I said, I've got the exhibit's ready, it's just going to be key in our numbers. The reason why I, I'm kind of rushing this through, and I don't mean to rush it through, is I want to do things a little differently this year. So I want the first draft to be presented on February 3. And then the second draft on February 17. And I want to have a public hearing on March 2 to present the budget. And then I want an opportunity at the workshop to talk about concerns that were brought forward and have another opportunity to make any changes. So I'm kind of adding one more opportunity than we've had in the past for people to come forward at these meetings and say, I don't understand why we need to spend that money on this, or whatever, before we block it on March 16. Is everybody okay with that timetable? And I know the 24th, I'm hoping, you know, anything I can do to help you guys with run rates or what things are typically caused, I'm happy to do that.
Any additions, any comment? Move that forward then.
Okay.
We propose like giving you is things that we should be doing or thinking about we could change. State law to affect our needs here in the park. The blurring one is the incorporation of the ARC committee into the statute. Based on the court decision, the ARC committee is not in the statute. It has its own independence that sometimes causes us problems. Like we can appoint somebody, but we can't remove someone. Okay, and it can stay on there for a lifetime, there's no deadline of when that person has to come off. Basically, a voluntary system, you know, they leave when they want. So one of it would be make it a, you know, committee, make it an appointment by the chair to one-year terms, up to three times. Establish a chair of the ARC committee, so they have some kind of structure. Establish rules by the ARC members subject to the approval of the board. Require it in the whole, I put down monthly means, they put down quarterly means, I mean, they put down semi-annual means. They should be open to the public. Report to the board on an annual basis. That they, well, actually, they took the previous year, so we have some idea what's going on in the park. And the last one's probably the most important part of it. Currently, if they get sued, they're not covered by us. I don't know how many people would be willing to take that kind of risk of sticking their neck out if they would be sued. So that, the last part, basically that they would have the same protection that you and I have as board members. I think that's important. Again, these are legislative changes based on the last conversation we had on this. I didn't give you copies, I'm sorry, that's why you haven't
Question?
Yeah, I apologize.
Sandy, Sandy Stevens' beautification, is she, is she covered? If, if somebody sued the beautification committee, is she covered? Or do we need to include that in our, in our fixes?
That's a good question, I'd have to check with the attorney. I would assume because it is a committee of the board, that she would be, but I'm not absolutely sure, so it is a question I need to ask.
TJ answers some of those, that was, just how would I
I will contact our attorney, ask him that question, email him that question. I tend to think she would be because it's a committee of the board.
Right, but while we're fixing stuff, I want to make sure we fix it all.
Yes, probably should go to the insurance company also. I understand that if she considered a volunteer in the park, she'd probably be covered. But should confirm that with the insurance company.
Well, isn't, isn't her a volunteer in the resident?
No, no, that's why, that's why I'm proposing all the
Gotcha, okay.
The legal change that we should look at, if nothing else. This is probably the most important one, I mean, the other ones are nice. And then the last one I proposed is that the park be given the authority to conduct bingo and 50/50 raffles in accordance with Florida statutes and regulations. When they designed the law for the raffles and the bingles, they left out special park districts.
Right, right.
And we need to, if we're going to
Right.
change the laws after 20 years, that's probably one of those ones that, you know, seems so minor, but it would make some sense. And the reason, and I follow the logic, the legislature said, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of about 100 or more special taxi districts. And they're all different kinds of taxi districts. You've got community activities that are special taxi districts, you have us, they're, they're all over the place. So they didn't just want to give blanket okay to have bingles and raffles. So this would correct that problem also. This looks not limited, again, I want to remind you, we should start thinking about what you want to add.
Right.
You know, to change the laws. Yes, Lauren?
On the ARC discussion, maybe it would come under one of the others, but under establishing rules. But I think it would be valuable to have the ARC notify the public relations trustees of permits that they approve or projects that they approve on an ongoing basis. You know, that's, yes.
That's where it says establish rules by ARC members subject to the approval of the board. That's where you would have your input and say, we want you to add this one, we want you to add this one, we want you to take that one out. Because that's the only time we're going to get that opportunity. But currently, you're right, we, that is one of the, we should be putting in there, but we can't because they're not covered by state statute, that part of the charter, these. That's the intent.
So are you, are you looking at, are you looking for us to start listing the things we want to see added?
Yeah, and the thing, and if you got, you know, concerns about certain ones, that's discussed, that was talked about. These are just ideas, none of these are in cement, none of these are, you know, this is my wish list, you may have a whole different wish list.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to add to them.
Okay.
Section 13 of the statute says the property of the district shall consist of the recreational halls, shuffle courts, marina, playground, walks, and other property. Should we enumerate beach, tent, post office, laundry, activity center, and pool?
Isn't that further, isn't that further in there?
Nope. Not in, not in section 13, it, it just says end of the property, which then I'll fall under, under end of the property. But while we're cleaning the supplement, it cleans up.
What was the post about this?
Oh, I'm sorry, I put through that. Beach, tent, post office, laundry, activity center, and pool.
Beach, tent, I, that's in 2A, that would incorporate church property.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Well
Adding section 2J to incorporate church property.
Right, that, that incorporates the property. This is just in section 13 where it's talking about the property of the district shall consist of, and it's listing out
Okay.
What happens if we want to delete something, like laundry or something? We, we TV, so say we want to remove the TV station.
Yeah, I guess, I guess maybe, maybe we need to be more, we need to be the things that are more prominent, like beach and tent and pool. Maybe the activity center, because the activity center is always going to be an activity center, an I-9. But the pool, the pool, post office, box, and laundry, that building might change, so maybe we don't want to include that in the enumeration. That will fall under the end of the property.
Yeah, I think, I think section 13 reference to other property now or hereafter erected or purchased is sufficient to cover it unless there's a real need to be more specific.
That's in our charter, no, that wouldn't
Yes, yes.
Again, I want you to get away from the idea of the charter. The charter is not a legal statute of law. The statute governs this park. The charter is a nice document, but for the most part, the court rule and the tripartite situation, unless it's in the statute, it doesn't exist.
We're referencing in a material as a charter, we should change that also.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that, you got to have one or, one or the other document governing you. And as long as the court's telling us, you got to look at state statute, we got to clean up that statute. I mean, it's almost 20 years old and it hasn't been touched in that length of time. It's time that we make a push to try to get it changed, and I guarantee unless they're going to take it.
Well, that's another concern. That's another concern ultimately, when we have a list of what things might be politically deal breakers that we can live without, might be a consideration before we ultimately.
Agreed. Okay, but I've learned one thing, you can throw enough against the law, some of it's a stick.
That's right.
And my objective is to stick so much stuff in it that we can get as much as we can within reason.
But some things are much more critical.
Yes, we'll have to prioritize them.
Right.
And the other thing is they have to be concepts, they can't be language. That was the other thing I learned from legislators, they have to be a concept of what you're planning to do, because then they're going to come back and they're going to ask you, for example, "What's going to cost residents of the park?" Or "What's it going to cost the park?" In changing the regulations.
One question I had on item number six, maybe Mary can answer it, as far as, maybe you already know, the deadline that the county has, when do we have to have information to them to put it on the tax bill?
We have to rat fire budget before March 31st every year.
But that's our current rule.
Right.
If we change this, item six is talking about changing the budget deadline.
The budget, yeah.
The county's going to have a deadline when they have to have the information to put it on the tax roll. So we want to make sure if we're proposing some change in that date, that we don't go beyond the county's deadline.
We're not proposing a change in the date, we're just proposing that the date be what's real versus what's, I mean, this is old language, we already changed our fiscal year to October 1st, we said 10th 30th.
That's not what I'm talking about. The part about the second sentence or the last sentence in there, a deadline for approving the budget from April to August.
Oh.
And, and we wouldn't want that date, I wouldn't think, to be after the deadline for the county to receive information.
I agree.
So I don't know what that date is either.
Any others? As you have ideas or changes you want to make, you can submit them to me, you can't discuss it with the board, maybe, keep on putting on a sheet and keep on adding them to the list, and, you know, as you see things you think we shouldn't do, deal with, you know, we can talk about them too, I mean. Dwayne brought, Dwayne brought up the idea about the TV, it definitely won the, you know, I looked at it and said, "Well, you don't have a deadline anymore." You know? You brought up corporate, you know, I put in there, incorporate rules and regulations and charters into the state law, actually make it part of the document.
We need to change our website and so forth too, from it refers charter.
Pardon?
Under a website?
Yeah.
It refers to charter.
We're going to keep that.
So we need to be consistent, whatever I think.
Yeah, correct, we've got to first get to the point where you've got the state looking at this the same way we're looking at it. I'm not against the idea. Okay, PP15 workshop worksheet?
Yeah, from the, I think it was the last meeting, we have discussed the change to PP15 on developing just the work.
You gave copy to TJ?
Yeah, it's all stamped in.
I mean, she knows you're passing out this meeting.
Yes.
Perfect, okay, sorry.
Did I only make two copies? Well, they're already there. Anyway, the only thing that's changing in that PP15 is just changing the, I didn't say for copy for myself, just changing the.
You're just adding a new page.
The disposal of the personal property, they have property worksheet. So the whole document then becomes a tiny piece of equipment, it identifies the inventory tag, the purchase date, purchase amount, blah, blah, blah. And that's going to be signed in by the maintenance trustee or the maintenance foreman. It also identifies the PP15 requirements of what we discussed. If it's under $1,500, it's just an automatic. If it's over 15, then it goes into the bid. The PP15 itself actually identifies how to submit the item for bid and received under sealed bids at the next board meeting, et cetera. So the only thing that really changed in there is just the form itself for submitting your piece of equipment.
There's your copy.
Thank you.
Any questions? I have one question. Under number one, is the local disposition authorization new? Does it get underlined?
No.
No, okay. Another question I asked.
No, that's all, that's all old verbiage, the only thing that's new is the third page.
Okay. You'll take, move that to the next meeting?
Yes, I will.
Horseshoe Club, find it, folks, let me.
Yep, we received this request from the Horseshoe Club to help with some renovation costs. Are we going to support this expenditure and where would it fall?
I think we need to support it because we support all the other.
I'm 100% agree.
You know, the groups and stuff, where it falls.
Well, Dwayne had mentioned that he thought.
Give me the money, baby.
The maintenance budget could absorb it when the ins still stay within their.
Yeah, if I can, I guess with preapproval of the board, let me go back and take a look at this to see if I do have money for the rest of the fiscal year, and then I can go ahead and just make the change and do it for them.
You'll report back to us the next meeting?
Yeah.
But we don't have to approve it or vote on it or anything because that's far below your maximum.
Yeah, it'll be on my, it'll be on my dollar, and I'll just notify you that you have the money to do it.
Got you, perfect, perfect, perfect.
Saturday night dances?
Yes. Pass this out, please.
Does TJ have a copy, or does this can pass out in the workshop? No? No? I'm going to have to take two down.
You may. Okay. I would like to add to our Saturday night dances by incorporating the beautification committee and the fire department fundraisers into our Saturday nights, thus eliminating the dances on Thursday and Friday. When these dances are on these days, someone loses funds. So we need, we need funds for both beautification, to keep our park lovely, and fire department, so that our taxes don't go sky high, we don't have a fire department. We still will have four Saturday night dances, but with different genres. We will try to play as a majority. I have an example there of how we're going to do that. If we do like three of our regular Saturday nights and put one in another one, then we save that money that we get from, that we have to pay out for a band. And therefore, we can then roll that over to the next month. And if we have three the next month, then we'll also save that fourth one again. And that will give us more money that we can have for trying to find a better band for those nights.
And so you're looking at, you're looking at December of 20 and then January of 2021?
This is not written in stone. This is just something we, an example.
But that's what these dates represent here, the 5th is December 5th, 2020, and January 9th, 2021.
The only one I see a major problem with is the February 6th one, because it limits the number of people from the park that can attend it. Specifically designed for Michigan, Canada.
And we wondered about that one.
It's not open to the public, if their first priority is the Michigan residents and Canadian residents, if they, if they fill up, it prevents anybody else from attending, there's the problem I have with that one. And that's really the only one I have a problem with from my perspective of looking at it as a park function. The other ones I'd have no problem with, the only recommendation I would be, is eliminating table assignments. You get a ticket, you buy the ticket, you have the ability to attend the function. By numbering them, you basically dictate where a person has to sit, and that can cause a whole mess of problems. Understanding that you're going to limit the number of people from outside that you're going to be able to attend. Let, correct me if I'm wrong, the last dance, we cleared $637 at the door, that more than covered our cost. Just understand, you know, from the park's perspective, I don't think it's a problem. I think from people outside the park, it may be an issue, because a lot of them like to attend our dances, but we're not here to service them. I think you need to kind of ask around, or you, what we're going to do, the board should kind of ask around if we did this, which you find that to be a problem, because we've been offering free dances, now we're charging for the Saturday night dances, is that going to have, we can get a lot of blowback out of it. Something you should be aware of, something you should talk to people about, because they could get blowback saying, "Wait a minute, you had all these free dances, now you're charging us for these dances." I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying that those are concerns you should look at and discuss with people, especially on the activity fair, having a discussion with people as they come up, talking to them about it, and explain it, you know.
Well, just the comments that I've received from talking to different people is, they're not against charging $10 if we can get a better band because passing the gel on three of the time, two of one sick, you know, have been here for years, they would like to see a different change. So I've had positive return from that. In fact, the last dance that we had for the fire department, that band that was here, I heard rating reviews about that, so I don't have a problem charging $10. I don't think a lot of people out there are going to mind that. But is that per company, is that per person?
Per person.
I'd like to clarify the suggestion, Sandy, that certain ones, like the beautification committee, I think it's got two on here, the hoedown, the fire department, those would be organized by someone else other than under the seasonal recreation trustee umbrella, is that?
Right.
So it kind of comes down to like two, two a month, because what I'm seeing is the January 23rd would be the committee beautification, the question about the Canada-Michigan dinner, and then the hoedown would be separate, the fire department, and then again, March 28th, beautification. Those, those five items would be outside of the seasonal recreation. So those would be likely, everybody would pay a fee to participate at those.
Right.
Again, they don't have to participate.
Right, right, but just, just trying to be sure I understand what the.
So basically, instead of a free Saturday night dance every Saturday, it's every other Saturday would be free, and every other Saturday would be a function that would require a pre-purchase of the ticket.
That doesn't necessarily hold true as long as it's repeated, so there's going to be, there's going to be confusion that we can deal with, but there's going to be confusion with, "I showed up at the dance last Saturday, and I just showed my ID and I walked in. This Saturday I show up, I show my ID, and they tell me I have $10, or I have to have bought a ticket." So we've got to make sure that we make it very obvious and we educate everybody how that would work. I think it's a grand idea, I do, I think it's wonderful. I do have to agree that with Mike on the Michigan-Canada dinner, I'm not sure that putting that on a Saturday is the appropriate thing to do. Because they're not just a dance, they're a dinner dance, and like Mike said, the first day's ticket sales are open only to Michigan-Canada residents, and if they sell out, they sell out, and then nobody else can go. And so he's right, it's limited, and I'm not sure that's a good venue to stick in there.
Pick that on Monday.
You know, I'm sure you could find somebody to jump in that spot, like maybe a fire department or something, but, but I, I agree, I don't think that dinner, because the dinner is also not going to be a $10 event. I can tell you that right now, the Michigan-Canada dinner is not a $10 event. And they're not going to be able to make it a $10 event, nor do they want to. So I'm thinking that they just don't fit in that pigeonhole of this list. You know?
They don't, they don't belong there because it's not open to everybody in the park.
Exactly.
Not because they're going to need to charge more than $10, because these other beautification and fire department dances are not necessarily going to be $10 events.
Got you, okay.
Depends on who we get, what we have.
How much it costs for that?
For the Saturday night dance.
How much we have to charge in order to transform it.
Right.
Do we need to have a dance every Saturday? Or can we go every other Saturday to save money for the bands?
I vote on that. That's, well, for the months of February, March, that's probably.
The board's going to have it every other.
It looks like they're filled, 1960, 2330.
If you want to attend, you can.
No, I mean, do we actually have to physically put on a band every Saturday night, or can you go every other?
So you're suggesting seasonal recreation dances only be every other Saturday, leaving the off Saturdays available for any other fundraiser that we want to have in the park?
Yeah. So maybe, maybe say, maybe say something along the lines, and make it up, but the second and fourth Saturday is part, is seasonal rec, it's free to residents, the other dances require pre-purchased tickets, or possibly, possibly a ticket at the door if they're not sold out. Yeah, that, that would work in my world, and then, and then a lot of them fill in around that. What, have you already booked all your bands for 2021?
The contracts have been sent out.
They've been sent out, so 2021 is pretty much locked in with what we're doing right now. We're actually looking forward to 2022 in doing that.
I think I can call them, and it's not in stone.
Okay.
I think I can call them, tell them there's going to change the plan.
All right, so you're going to need an answer PDQ so that you can get those calls made.
Yep.
So you're asking, can we rock with this format this year? And then in 2022, we would look at seasonal rec doing maybe the second and fourth Saturday, maybe first and third, second, third, I don't care what the number is, but a set pattern for the residents to be able to follow at the time. Does that sound good?
Any other questions? So April would still be build the regular music, regular bands? April was also part of your responsibility.
Two.
The first two.
First two, I think so.
Okay, you'd also have to fill all those in, okay. In your budget preparation, you're going to make this recommendation?
Yeah.
Any questions?
I think it's an excellent idea, and keeps from overlapping, having a dance on Thursday and then tomorrow having a dance on Saturday. I think, kudos, great idea.
Dumpster?
Sandy?
Dumpster?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm still, I'm still there.
All right, no problem.
Asking. I have had a person from the park come to me and suggest that we put a container out by the dumpsters that says firehouse, because they said that there are so many things going in those dumpsters that could go to the firehouse and make us a lot more money.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that's a grand idea, because my husband was at the dumpster just yesterday, oh, Saturday, sorry, Saturday, with yard waste. And the yard waste was the only dumpster that was available, and I normally bag my weeds as garbage because I don't want to recycle weeds, but, so he was tearing the bags open and dumping it in the, in the yard waste. And somebody came along and they threw a, a plastic trash bag in the yard waste, and my husband said, "You can't put that in there." They said, "Well, it's yard waste." He said, "But the plastic can't go in there." And they just shrugged their shoulders, adding a nail out. And there's garbage that winds up in the recycling dumpsters, we're going to wind up with garbage in the firehouse dumpsters, and then we're going to be expecting the auxiliary to go over there and clean the dumpster out. I agree, people do throw some things out that could be used by the. I agree, people do throw some things out that could be used by the firehouse, and that really breaks my heart, but we have a method that they can take it over to the fire station, put it on the table in the back, and it gets whisked away by the auxiliary and stuff, I just, I don't see that as being a good idea.
And I really don't want to absorb the cost of another dumpster to have the fire auxiliary come up and try to make a determination of what is good and what isn't good, and have to have that staff that's pushing seventy-five and eighty years old to try to throw that heavy ass, I'm sorry, heavy stuff into the dumpster. So I don't, I don't want to go along with that.
I'd agree, I think it'll end up being one more place for garbage to end up in.
Econ.
You got an answer on that one. Residents, comments or question, comments about anything we discussed? For workshop.
Laura Wood, six, six, one, five, Washington Street, I was listening to the thing about the channel seven thirty-two, and in the past, you were able to send an email and say, could you post this if you were cluttered, mad at what. Currently now, you have to send an email to them and to the office because it's public comment. If, I would like that included, to be like that still, because if you have to send the paper, they have to rekey it, and it needs more work for them, if you send the message, they can edit it, they can cut and paste and do what they want, as long as you, whatever you're sending goes to TJ in the office. So if we switch to just the paper, there's more work for them, you know, there's type, they can make a typo or some stuff like that, if you made your typo, then that's okay, but sometimes, when you did it by paper, it did not get the way you wanted the message to be, so, you know, I'm not saying you will have paper, because we have people that are not computer literate, but I'm just saying, have that opportunity to be, you know, to send me what you want, by email, and then through the, the part, copy of that email. That's it, thank you.
Good. Hi, Dear Wester, eighteen oh four, Ohio, one comment about the restriction of three minutes, I understand that, but we're not allowed to speak after each item, so sometimes, you know, that doesn't quite work, anyway. To fill in form, Lori, if you need help to do that, I have the software to do it, it's Adobe software, I do fill in forms all the time, I'm willing to help you do that, I could get it sent to me by email, I could even PDF things, I could fill them in, I could send them back, can help do that. I recommend that the ten o'clock time deadline for submission of the slide information be changed to the end of day on Tuesday, I understand that there needs to be timelines for things, I don't understand the ten AM, and if they could be restricted or changed to the end of day on Tuesday, then that gives people that day to get things in as well. On the ARC committee, I recommend discussion about having a rotating membership, so that people, you have a continuity and history of people on the ARC, and, you know, rotate to one, two, and three years, I realize that would be a challenge for the first rotations, but then it would settle into an ongoing rotation, and then you have that history and, and continuity there. And then I also recommend that these ideas for the legislative changes be posted somewhere on the website upfront, not have to go find it, so that people can look at them and, and think about them, provide comments, these are serious things that people would need to think about, and it gives them a chance to let them know that the board is working on this, whatever the topics are, and they can review it among themselves and provide input back to the board when that time comes. Thank you.
Sandy Stevens, eighteen fourteen, Minnesota Avenue, regarding the Saturday night dances. Does this go for a vote at the next meeting, the, what we talked about today?
You're talking about the dances?
Yeah.
No, that's gonna be a legis, that's gonna be part of the, her report, her comments to the budget, she was at a treasurer on the changes she wants to make as it relates to her budget.
So, we're gonna go forward with that as far as, the reason why I'm asking is because we have two shows, dances, shows, and beautification in two thousand and twenty, that if we go over, if you go over now, I can put on Saturday nights, because we haven't sent any money in yet, so that's my, that was my concern, if you wanted, if I could.
We're curbing twenty twenty.
You mean twenty twenty. I mean twenty twenty, no, I mean twenty twenty.
Okay, that's why I was a little confused.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, I don't know, any questions?
Aren't we looking at this for twenty, December twenty twenty, and then January, February, March of twenty twenty-one?
Twenty-four, yeah.
Okay, so then.
Because we're already, we're already contracted in with twenty twenty.
I was just a little confused, so we'll go on and keep the dates that we have for twenty twenty, thank you very much, that was a very good idea.
Any other, before our training, let's look at the software for PDF, give you the document.
I have the software, I just have to have the time and the brain power. But I, we own that software, same thing that, that Danny recommended, the Adobe software, and I may, I may well take a look at, if I can get that to her, I may have her go ahead and do that for me, not a problem. But that's not gonna happen in the next few days, because this meeting is gonna eat up the rest of my time for two, three days.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go.
About the Saturday night dance proposal and the question that Sandy posed, I need some clarification on that, because, for instance, the February twentieth hoedown, that right now is not booked on February twentieth, because that's a Saturday, so if they're going to make that a Saturday thing, they're gonna have to change the contract that they have, and the same thing for the Rat Pack that's on here as March twentieth. Right now, when you talk to them, you didn't book them for March twentieth, you booked them for another date, so if you need to change your contract with them, we need to, you need to know that sooner rather than later.
Right, that's, that's exactly right.
This, this is just an example, though, this is twenty twenty-one.
But they've already, they've already got Rat Pack coming.
Well, she just used that as an example of the beautification committee, where they have two different dances, one might be the Rat Pack, but in twenty twenty-one, it might not be Rat Pack.
Well, they've got Rat Pack that they're planning on bringing in in twenty twenty-one.
Yes, we do.
But not for that date.
For a different date.
Not for that date, that's why.
I see what you're saying, okay.
And, and the, there's a couple of other ones here that they've already spoken to them about dates that were not Saturday night dates, so if she, it's not, it might not be too late to change them, she's gonna have to find out if they're available.
I think I may resolve it, come back with a, what is it called here, PP thirty-eight, next meeting, with the line, the setup, with the change in dates, we can prove the changes then for twenty twenty-one, that'll resolve your concern and issue, that'll reserve your problem, and bring it forward. So bring it back as a PP thirty-eight, next meeting.
Because I was.
And make sure they're locked, talk to these groups that wanna do this, that they're on board with this idea, so you're gonna have to talk to the beautification committee, she's already here, you're gonna talk to the hoedown, you're gonna talk to the fire commissioners, who are sitting on either side of me.
Yeah, because we already talked February one, and now you have me down for March, so.
So, and that way we'll have it submitted, you know, confirmed that way.
So it's gonna come back to the workshop?
No, it's gonna come back as a.
As a motion?
As a motion, because she did the workshop, she discussed it with us. You're gonna bring it back as a motion to the board, okay? Any, anything else? I made a motion to a court, seven forty-six.